Order. First up is Jim Jenkins with a zoning change.
This is a resolution amending the Loudoun County zoning map, Loudoun County Tennessee, pursuant to Chapter 7, 13-7-45, Tennessee Code Annotated, rezone from R1 Suburban Residential District to C2 General Commercial District, Loudoun County Tax Map 007, Parcel 112.00, located at 12570 Highway 70, Loudoun County Tennessee, situated in the fifth legislative district.
Comments?
With the public hearing, if there's anybody here for or against, I guess.
No, there's nobody signed up.
All right. We'll address it by the time.
Okay. It'll be number six on the agenda, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, I've asked Commissioner Morrison to open the meeting with a pledge and a prayer.
To the left, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Bless pray. Dear Lord, we are thankful for your grace and mercy. You created us in your image for a purpose and gave us free will to decide. I ask that you would open the hearts and minds of people on a large scale to discern information and clear away the cognitive dissonance that blankets the earth. Please be with all of us here to do your will and your way. I ask for these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Okay. Tammy, call the roll.
Randolph.
Here.
James.
Here.
Jenkins.
Quillen.
Here.
Satterfield.
Here.
Whitfield.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Morrison.
Here.
Shaver.
Here.
Waller.
Present.
Okay. Next up is the adoption of the May 1st County Commission Agenda.
Mr. Chairman, need to add one item if it's the pleasure of the commission. It's a kind of a last minute thing. It's the resolution in opposition of anything that resembles a red flag law in Nashville. The legislation, the session's over, but accordingly, according to what the news is saying, Lee intends to call a special session, so time is of the essence, supposed to be May 10th, I think, so if the commission's pleasure, I'd like to add that item to the agenda.
Okay. I'm gonna remove number B on your buddy's name about the sharing of the passwords for computers. The resolution is not done, so I'm gonna remove that and add the red flag resolution to B. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make motion to approve the agenda as it's been altered since.
Got motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the reading and acceptance of the April 3rd Loudoun County Commission Meeting Minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as they were written, they were sent out to us days ago, so we should've all had a chance to read.
Second. Second from Bill. Any further discussions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. General public comments. Gary Bush.
Good evening. Normally I sit here almost every couple of weeks and don't say much from the back, but today I feel I have to come up here and say some things on the resolution with regards to the red law implications. I just want to get a little background, slightly more than a month ago, on the 27th of March, a 28-year-old from Nashville walked into Covenant Christian Elementary School, and he carried out a death wish. He decided to shoot and take the lives of three children and three adult teachers. With that, he legally acquired weapons, or guns as weapons of his choice, his or her choice. Across America today, we have come to, we've become used to seeing these types of headlines. For some of us, even personally affected by these happenings, way too frequently. As Christian man, a proud citizen of this great country, father, grandfather, I'm hurtful to hear or read about the unnecessary killings throughout our country, especially our youth and our women, but that's a topic for another day on the airport side. Immediately, the immediate outcry that we hear from the press and many politicians was the appearance of insincere condolences for the families who lost loved ones, while immediately stating a well-scripted need to take legal actions to control the guns. Even our governor stepped up the microphone calling for an in-session legislatures to immediately fast-track a pass, a 15-page bill that would pave the pathway which would violate every law by Tennessee's constitutional right to keep and bear arms via red flag laws. This was only two years after the same governor signed into law the Tennessee Second Amendment Sanctuary Act, which amended the Tennessee code to nullify gun control laws that are deemed a violation of the Second Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. The purpose of me being here tonight and this evening in front of you, the commissioners, is to speak out as concerned citizen regarding never allow a crisis to go to waste, which was famously made by Rahm Emanuel, to approach and address the rising shootings across the country, killers viking our country today. The political left and anti-constitutional activists would heavily believe the only answer to this problem is equal, this problem equals tighter gun control laws, limiting the rights of every gun owner across the country. The statistical data doesn't support this narrative. To give you a few examples, dating back 40 years, 1981, 45% of U.S. households were gun owners. 2022, fast forward, 45% of house homeowners are gun owners. The population in that state during that period of time grew by 30%. The population in Tennessee grew by 34%. If you look at the death rates of guns, 34,050 were killed by guns in 1981, 48,830 were killed in 2021, last year in the data. Suicides are largest death toll of guns. Over 50% of those deaths are suicides. Homicides, which includes basically mass shootings around the country, is basically was .76% back in 1981, and it's dropped to .61% of the deaths today. So it's actually going down, it's not going up. So with that, as we look at those, guns by themselves, you know, guns by themselves can't and don't kill, no more than a car does, which the main denominator or key denominator of all those are the person behind the trigger of the wheel. We have plenty of laws on the books today that are not properly being enforced, allowing known criminals the freedoms to commit crimes again, while law-abiding citizens' rights are attacked. The governor's executive order, along with his request for special session, to place any type of gun law restrictions on the citizens of Tennessee, is not only a violation of the U.S. and Tennessee Constitution, but is also not in this state's or county's best interest. Tennessee is seen today by many of us, new residents, as a sanctuary state that upholds its citizens' rights, freedoms, and liberties, protected to each of us by law of the land. So I'm here tonight to ask you as the county commission to uphold that, because our responsibility is to work with you to make sure that's upheld, that's in the constitutions and the Declaration of Independence, why it's written that way. We have fallen asleep at the wheel in many cases. I ask you to basically, this writing, and I'll give a copy of this, is right now in the Tennessee chamber, if the special session goes through, you have the House Representative Pearson, who's got a number of regulations that he's writing. I'm sure a couple other people will probably give you a lot more details on that, that he's already put in front of the House at the moment, that he's trying to push through with the 15-page bill. So again, with that, I ask you to look at the resolutions that I've got here. I've got a copy of the one from the Jefferson County, it's start to be written. We've asked, I've got also in here a couple of certain wherethas that have been recommended that to put into that bill or a resolution for you to write it. With that, thank you for hearing me out, and I'll take everybody else's time, I do have copies, I don't want to do that.
Thank you, Gary. Jim McCall.
Good evening, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to address this issue. I think it is worthwhile to look at red flag laws from the standpoint of not just the Second Amendment, but the Fifth Amendment to the Constitution. I think, as we all know, these Bill of Rights were written to basically codify what were believed as God-given, not government-granted rights. And the Fifth Amendment states that no person shall be, list of a lot of things, deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process. Red flag laws are the definition of lack of due process. As Gary had mentioned, there are a number of other laws already on the book which tend to use to address these issues, but that's not politically intended. This week during the ATF hearings, or I guess it was last week rather, Representative Wesley Hunt and Chip Roy and a number of others had a lot of questions and comments about not the weapons, but the shooters. How many are medicated? What happens when you take an individual and jack them up with hormones? Well, gee, what about the mental health issues until 2018, the World Health Organization had transgenderism as a mental illness? But they changed that, and why? Did the medical aspect change? No, it was to remove the stigma. So I think you go through this, and it's, as Wesley Hunt, as Congressman Hunt said, you know, the left has always been chipping away at the Second Amendment rights, and frankly, all of the other rights along with it, and every time they have the opportunity, if you compromise, then two weeks later, it's we need to do more. The time for compromising with our fundamental rights needs to be over. You know, Benjamin Franklin, to close here, said that, you know, he who would give up his essential liberty for some safety will deserves neither and will lose both. And that's where we're at now. And I think if you look around, our parents would not believe where we are today with the loss of our fundamental freedoms in the Bill of Rights, the Constitution, our God-given rights. We, as individuals, and you as a commission, will hopefully stand up and send a very clear message to Nashville, no more, we're done. Thank you.
Roy Beavers.
Thank you. I just have a brief point I'd like to make. I've been living in Tennessee just under five years, moved down from Connecticut, where I was a captain with the Connecticut State Police, I had 27 years of service. When I was there, we had emergency committal laws, so you get a call that somebody's acting strangely, officers will be dispatched, you get there and you determine he is in fact, or she is, as the case may be, they have a problem. And we had the legal authority to be able to take that person into custody for a 72-hour hold, where they would be evaluated, medicated, mental facility. We also, we didn't do that willy-nilly, had to be very, very careful because you deprive somebody of their rights, so you had to be able to articulate clearly while you were doing that. So it was a very serious situation. We would take their weapons into custody for safekeeping, then if they were cleared, they could get those weapons back. One of my concerns about red flag laws is that they could be abused easily, it's just chipping away. So in checking, Tennessee has a similar code, Tennessee Code 33-6-401, Emergency Detention. A person has a mental illness or a serious emotional disturbance, and the person poses an immediate substantial likelihood of serious harm under 33-6-501 because of a mental illness or a serious emotional disturbance, then that person may be detained under 33-6-402 to obtain examination, the certification of the need of care and treatment. So you already have a mechanism very similar to what we have in Connecticut that we used, so I don't need, I don't know what the need to be redundant and add additional red flag laws are, but I just wanted to bring that point, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Roy. And thank you for your services in Connecticut State Trooper.
Thank you.
Hey, Bob, Brad Clennett.
Thank you for letting me speak. Tennessee has a history of stepping into gun laws slowly. One example would be when they allowed firearms to be kept in cars at workplaces, so the person could be protected to them from work. One of the silly parts about the first law was, as long as it was your car and not a rented car, now, it's, yeah, it's not the car that has got the guns, it's the person. Well, Tennessee Firearms Association sort of stepped on that one and got that law changed, so that they kind of made it so that it was, it became a person. Red flag laws come in many different flavors. In some states, like Tennessee, I can see them moving into it very slowly. Immediate members of the family, especially a spouse. Other states, that can go to a spouse, it can go to children, it can go to a tough to children. Think of a 15-year-old, a cellphone you just took away. What do you think he might do? He gets mad at mom and dad, and next thing you know, he's red flags. What about your neighbor who sees you leaving your car after a shooting session with even a gun that might be in a case, and gets nervous? Some states have it that they go, it goes that far. So here in Tennessee, if you allow a red flag law, and even under restricted conditions, that door gets open, and it doesn't take much for the door to be pushed. Legislative sessions do it, and the more that door gets pushed, the worse it could get. As previous speaker said, stop it in its tracks right now. Thank you very much.
Russell Lee, Brad Clennett.
Okay, I'm sure. And you. He pretty much covered some of the stuff we didn't go into, what we were going to talk about, so I defer. I agree with him, we're married, that's it.
Tammy Evans.
That's gonna be a little bit different. My name's Tammy Evans, my husband and I own the Carmichael Restaurant and Tavern. I came tonight because I know that we were discussed some in the workshop, I wasn't aware that we were going to be on there, I would've been here. But I just felt like I wanted to rely on the subject a little bit different from what you all see it. We do rely on public parking. Our building, the property, is the building, that is all that we own. We do not own any other area, and the building sits on the entire property that we own. So we don't have an opportunity for a parking lot. So we do rely on city, state, and county parking. And, but we do pay for that parking, and I want you to understand that. Every time that someone comes into my restaurant to eat, they pay a county tax. We get no other county services, because we are in the city, in our little building that we own, that's the city law. So, but every customer that comes in there pays a county tax to eat there. Last year alone, my customers paid $12,000 to the county. That's not including the state and the city, we also pay state and city taxes, but $12,000 of that went to the county. Today, I just paid for last month's taxes, $1,400 went from my customers to the county. So we are paying for any privileges that we have to park in any area. I understand that it's annex parking, and that you all have your own businesses going on, and I know that the courthouse is going to be opening back up soon, and I can understand your reasoning and concern for that. I just am asking that we do rely on public parking. That is part of how we make our living. And we're small, we're not corporate, we're not, you know, we're not able to purchase land to build a parking lot on, because there's no land around us, it's all state and city, county-owned land. So just please consider that, when, I don't know what the discussion or topic is going to be about under annex parking, but please consider that. And we want to be good neighbors, we never meant any ill intention at all to the annex. If it had ever been brought to my attention, this would've been discussed and resolved before it came to county commission. I'm sorry that it wasn't, I was only made aware of one situation with an employee of the annex, so thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, Tammy. Sue Young.
Good evening. We all need to learn from history, I am a Scottish-American, to use that label, and we know about the Highlanders and how they were decimated, because they had their weapons taken away from them. Regarding the red flag law that is proposed, I am baffled that the focus is always on the gun, and not on those individuals who have severe mental health issues. Many of us here know that it's not just guns that are used to perpetrate crimes, but hammers, knives, anything that those with severe mental health issues can get their hands on. And I really want us to stand as true Americans and not enable a red flag law in this state. This is a last remaining bastion, one-off in this nation of true red-blooded Americans who believe in the Constitution and our Second Amendment rights. I'm proud to be an American, and I would like you to stand up for our constitutional rights and not budge to always be caving in to the liberals. I want us to stand for what red-blooded Americans stood for with the founding fathers, and there are still many of us left, so let's go with the right route, please. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, one second. Is it just me, or could everybody listen to her speak all day long?
Pandora Veilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the commissioners. A few years ago, I brought to this commission a request to make our county a Second Amendment sanctuary, and was blessed by unanimous vote. It only took, I think, 30 seconds, you couldn't wait to raise your hands and stand up for the Second Amendment. Now tonight, Mr. Bush has brought forward to you a resolution, and this time, we know your beliefs are in the Second Amendment, but we want you to share them with the governor and make them public once again. I'm concerned that we have a governor who went on to sign a bill that would make our state the Second Amendment sanctuary, but in a reaction to a shooting from a mentally ill person, is now willing to jump up and try and pass some sort of red flag bill. So I would greatly appreciate it if once again, you could unanimously vote for this resolution and point out to them, this county was one of the first counties that became a Second Amendment sanctuary in our entire state, and were followed by many others. I look forward to you once again uniting and making your position known to the governor and to the public in this entire country. Thank you again.
That vote will be up in just a few minutes. That concludes the public comments. Jim Jenkins, come on back. We're not gonna make you read it.
That's Satterfield's position, Henry, quit jumping Satterfield's job.
We gotta move right along.
Moving right along.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is a little one-acre parcel up in mine and Joe's, Commissioner, what's her name? Morrison. And it was already denied unanimously at the planning commission a couple of weeks ago. It would be my motion that we take the planning commission's recommendation, and we also deny the rezoning. Say it, Henry.
Can I get a motion?
Got it, my mind's a motion.
Second. Second, okay.
Now, explain how we're voting, Henry. Yes means we're for the...
Who was the second?
Jeff.
Yes means we're for opposing it.
No means...
For rezoning.
Okay. Why don't we just say you make a motion to not grant the request?
Motion to deny.
Motion to deny. And then it makes it yes.
To deny.
Yes is it, just yes, just yes. We messed up before on this, and that's why I'm so careful.
So the motion's to deny.
Yes, the motion is to deny.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, yes is to deny the rezon, no is to approve it. Call the roll, Tammy, and let's see if we get it right.
James?
Yes.
Jenkins?
I hear it, Quillen?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yes.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Did he answer?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries.
Yes.
Okay, Jim, you're clear.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, next up is Buddy Bradshaw, the mayor, he's out in sickbay.
I'm not gonna say nothing to that.
Okay.
You're gonna have a point.
First up is a recommendation to appoint to the Financial Advisory Committee Aaron Rice, our finance director. Make a motion to approve the nomination.
I'll say that.
Who was the second?
Me.
Okay.
Just pick one, man. I think you was there in that one, second.
That's pretty good, I usually don't get enough. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome, Aaron. Next one.
He gets another one.
Next one is to clarification of a policy that...
No, no, no.
No, no, sorry. Salary and benefits, Aaron Rice, Finance Director, Matt Kleinschmidt, Purchasing Director, to add to the salary and benefits.
Motion approved.
We got a motion?
Second.
Seconded by Bill James. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aaron, welcome. Okay.
She's our new finance director after our 18-year-long financial director, that's why it's kind of a big deal for her now. Lot on that young lady's shoulders.
And she's doing a very, she's doing a very good job. She's doing an outstanding job through the budget committee meetings. Okay, Commissioner Quillen.
Nope.
I forgot this all.
You're on the wrong page.
I am. Fan favorite.
I'm not gonna belittle this one very long, I think we all know what the answer to this one is. This is in reference to the potential red flag laws. Normally, our policy would require that go through workshop before it has a vote, unless there is a matter of urgency. We now know that the governor is discussing, the planning, possibly calling for a special session very early in May, either 10th, 15th, whatever, and we wouldn't have time to go through our general policy, so that's why I asked to have the agenda tonight. It was brought to my attention by Gary Bush, and I first told him, it's dead in the water, legislature's out of session, it's over, it's done. Then we got our little TCSA update, and it said, oh, special session, so all of a sudden the urgency was back. So I will make a motion that we forward this resolution, whichever one, and I will say, work with the mayor to get it down ASAP. I'll make a motion, we forward the resolution on to everyone in Nashville that needs it, particularly our three representatives and the governor's office.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver to forward a resolution in Nashville, seconded by Commissioner Waller. Any further discussion?
I think this is much needed. I'm like you all sitting out there, I'm afraid it's gonna lead to confiscating guns from law-abiding citizens. So I see when you take one small step, it leads to bigger steps, and I appreciate...
And I appreciate you bringing this to our attention, Mr. Bush.
Any further discussion?
My question is, can we deliver it tomorrow? That'll be up to the mayor, good luck.
We'll get it to him and we'll get it done and get it off to Nashville ASAP. Any further discussion? Tammy, call roll on this one.
Quillen?
Aye.
Satterfield?
Aye.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yes.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Yes.
Motion down. Pandora, and a win unanimous.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm gonna do like I generally do. I know what these folks are here for. We've got a little while left to go. If you all don't wanna stay for the rest of the session making, you certainly don't have to. If you want to stay, you're certainly welcome to. Except my wife, she rode with me, so she can't leave. So I'm gonna ask for five...
I thought you can give her a ride.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask for five minutes, right?
Okay, we'll let our friends from the Calico Village go on home. Thank you. Miss Scott?
What's your favorite single of Scott?
Thank you for your show.
He's already been arrested. More of this same kind of stuff. He was chasing something over down the sidewalk. Yeah, yeah, singing a song. There's problems.
I don't think all of... I remember the Duxford County resolution.
I can't, because if I go off script, I'd be talking for 25. They always have a mic in front of them.
How many times did he pull you over?
Where you at? Huh, small world.
I changed the agenda.
Yeah, you're struggling a bit there.
It's all right. We all have our slips.
Been busy this week?
Yeah, no, not this week, last week was...
Okay, who am I missing, Jake? That's Bill Ballinger. Okay, we got Chase back. We need Bill. Okay, we got Gary back and the fire chief. Oh, we got the captain in the back. I didn't see us slide in. Hold on, we're okay.
We got both of us here, we're two of you. If we just had Scotty know, that would just make the picture right there.
Okay, I'm gonna call the commission meeting back to order. Taking care of Van, Mayor. Rosemary, you're up next.
Okay, I'm a little off-kilter tonight. I've been to the eye doctor today, my eyes are still dilated, so I can't really see anything. So you can hold this out here. I have a few things that I just want to mention that are kind of concerning to me and to some of my constituents also. Our coverage of our meetings. I know that we've had trouble with our cameras. They seem to operate intermittently. Maybe they don't start when they're supposed to. They go off before meetings, they go off during the meeting. And I guess, you know, Mr. Moore has stood in front of us every meeting asking for some way for the county citizens to know what we're doing. And to me, that's one way of letting people know and letting people see us in action. So I don't know who is in charge of the cameras and if we've had a problem with them, or I guess I was just gonna ask, what are we doing with that? And do we pay somebody to do that? Or can anybody answer that? Yes, sir.
Well, our problem has been, for years, we had Loudon TV3 was operating. They were kind of branched out of school a little bit. They operated out of vocational school. So last year, I guess it was, Henry, Bill?
Yes.
When they came in more additional funding. And we kind of balked at that because we have the ability to do our own. So since then, we have started our own YouTube channel. Our IT handles it. Tammy works it from this end. And the only time we have trouble is when Loudon TV3 still tries to kind of step in and record it too. They can't both record at the same time. I think we now have it well-understood that our IT will be doing it rather than Loudon TV3. That's where our problems have been thus far. Now, there's always potential for internet glitch, but I don't know if anybody can do anything about that. I think all Charter was out for hours other days. But that's where our cutting off and on parts, you can generally find every meeting either or, but we want them to all be on ours. So that's kind of what's been going on with the cameras. Does that sound about right, Tammy?
I just had Tammy check it. Tom is taking care of it, which is the county, not TV3 over.
Okay.
And it's on right now.
When we take a break, I try to text him and tell him, we're not leaving, don't cut it off. But... So he monitors the camera usage? I can't say that. I text him to let him know. I don't know if he can do it remotely, I don't know all of his jobs, but I do try to keep him informed if we take a break. So he's on call during a meeting? So if you say, turn it off, turn it on, he operates that? I try to...
Once it starts and stays on until the end of the meeting.
But if he sees people get up and leave, I try to let him know, don't cut it off yet. Okay.
Until last year, we were pretty much relying on TV3. We didn't own the cameras. So now we own all the cameras. As the speakers and commissioners made that investment.
Okay. All right. Okay, just had a few questions about that. And I didn't know the allocation for ARPA funds were under Aaron. But I will say that the Second District is very grateful to have the allocated money. And I think the project that it's going to, the Fire Police Safety Training Center, will benefit everyone in Loudoun County. And we are supposedly starting to build it right ground in October. So I think things are rolling. And just, our district's very, very grateful that we could do something like that.
Laura, FT's gone out for that yet?
I'm not sure about that yet. I know they were working on that. I don't know if they've actually gone out. The cable line burial, that's another thing that I've been getting calls about, and I'm not sure how that works. We had a mishap in the Second District where I think it was Global came in in Allen Brook and cut some people's cable and told them it would be three weeks before they could fix it. And people don't understand how that happens. In the Sixth District, I got referred to a call up in Oak Creek subdivision. So anyway, I'm glad to help anybody in the county. I did let...
Thank you for taking care of that.
Mr. Waller, no. But Charter Cable came in, dug up everybody's yard, and then left it. So I guess, are they digging in a county right-of-way? Where are they putting this cable in? And do they notify people that they're doing this? And can they clean up their mess when they leave, put things back like they found them? I did talk to the man in charge at Charter when this happened, and he said, oh, it may be a month or so before we can get back up there to clean up what we have, the mess that we've made. And I believe they cut cable for 14 people in that neighborhood. AT&amp;T was there the day that I was there trying to fix things back. So I guess my question is, can we monitor this better to make these companies fix things back like they found them? I did talk with the constituent in Sixth District this morning to see... To see what, if they had been back. And she said they came out and threw some straw on the ground and left. So I don't know what our protocol for that is in the county. And maybe we need to take another look at that or enforce it one. So, does anybody...
There's nothing to enforce, no regulation.
We have any jurisdiction on utility right-of-ways. Are these neighborhoods established? Are they coming in there? So it's neighborhoods that are established, they're coming back and putting fiber in? Yes.
They weren't putting fiber in. This was Charter Cable. It's not, I think LCUB is gonna put their stuff in later. I mean, there's all kinds of things coming in.
I know in my area, AT&amp;T is racing to get fiber in before LCUB gets there. Right, so my...
But this was Charter.
It looks like Charter would already been there, is what I'm saying. If it's an established neighborhood, it's there. It's a newer neighborhood.
Yeah.
It's a newer neighborhood.
Now, you're talking about yours, he's talking about his.
I'm talking about mine is a newer neighborhood.
His is newer, hers is older. We have no authority on that. The closest we would have with anything would be the Billy Pickles Road Superintendent. And I honestly don't know what...
So can anybody come in in the right-of-way and dig up and...
Apparently they can.
So I can put something in there if I want to? Just go dig up yours?
What's your utility?
Yeah, you got me a utility. I mean, utilities have the greatest leniency to just run over everybody. Takes your property if they want to, I mean...
I could see that out of a utility company, but not a for-profit...
That's a utility company.
Charter would be a utility company.
Cable, AT&amp;T, all those are now deemed utilities, yes ma'am.
And in my stuff, there's an LCUB putting new poles, move the power.
Is this all happening on road right-of-way or...
It's on the easement. It's on utility easement. But LCUB put in the utility and moved the wire for electrical over. And AT&amp;T, none of the tables moved over to the pole. So I got two poles sitting by my front yard now.
I know how TASS operates when they do that. They contact every property owner and get permission to dig in their yard or dig through the property. And like I said, we even pay, if we have to take a tree down, we pay the property owner for that. And you're right, utility is one of the few that if you don't give them permission, they can get it anyhow.
Oh, yeah.
You're required by law to call 811. So if they don't have a valid ticket and the line's marked and they hit them, they could be charged substantially for it. So that's the first route I would go. Somebody hit your stuff, show me that ticket. Where's your locator?
Okay, I think their quarrel was that they have destroyed their yard and left it.
Well, if it's in the easement, they don't own that part of their yard. Yeah, if it's an easement...
I would say gather information, bring it to the next workshop, and we'll discuss it.
Okay.
See what we can do. Okay.
Who are they regulated by? I mean, is there a regulatory body that regulates cable?
They used, we used to have every community, every county had their cable TV authorities.
That's when it was affordable.
That's right. And then once the state of Tennessee deregulated, we have nothing. We can't tell them anything, we can't ask anything. They make all the decisions without any local input whatsoever. But coming to utility easements, I've never known anything you can do about enforcing utilities. Again, the highway superintendent, if it's on a county right-of-way, he would be the one that would have the most likely ability to have an authority to go in and say, clean it up. When you get into these subdivisions, especially if it's a Platte, an Allen Brook, or a Silverleaf, or whatever it is, these are HOA, they're member-managed, they've got utility easements, they would have more ability to enforce than the county or the city would have. HOA or POA, they can have more input on that than any of us.
Okay, all right. We're just looking for some guidance, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Waller.
Ms. Bibbins, at the workshop, we asked the mayor to reach out to you to discuss parking here. Has he done that?
I spoke to him. I found out about it the next day via some customers of mine who notified me that I was discussed. I reached out to Buddy, and I have already requested that all of my employees to not park in the county parking. They're to park on the city or the state right-of-ways. So I did talk to Buddy and told him what I had done. So he was aware of that. He didn't have the opportunity to reach out to me. I got him.
Got to a point. There's nothing against you, it's just I know that people are coming here to renew their tax, pay their private taxes, or apply, they can't find parking.
Right. I don't think that's happening on a very regular basis. I do know that during tax time, it was very busy. But we are our busiest at night. You know, after you walk close. We don't, you know, our busy time, big time, is 6:00, 6:30 at night. And we're not a vomit, so you all don't see that during your meetings. But during lunch, you know, we might have one or two days a week that we're busy during lunch, but that's it. Fridays, that it's not just us. That's usually our lowest day, that's because Sons of Smoke is open and, you know, they also have traffic. And so I just, I know that Loudon is getting bigger and more populated, but you know, our busiest times are not for breakfast and lunch. We are busy at night. Very rarely are we fully seated during lunchtime. So, but I do know, we've had some issues with employees. Some employees have been pretty aggressive with some customers. I think that's been taken care of. But, you know, we don't, we don't want any bad and real intentions towards the annex.
No one ever accused you of that, by any means. Let's just see how it goes with employees being moved, parking wise. We'll hear from the office boys up here, we'll hear from there.
And I talked to Tammy, Councilman Bibbins earlier today.
No, not Councilman Bibbins.
You still are. You will forever be Councilman Bibbins. Councilwoman Bibbins. Anyhow, we had a fine conversation. One of the things she said to me was, right now, we have one very small sign coming in on the east side up here that says, "Annex parking 7 to 4 something only," or something. And she said potentially some other signs. Billy Pickles office makes signs. So I was gonna check with Billy and see if he can make us maybe a little larger and maybe a few more signs in certain areas to make it clear that this is for annex parking 7 to 4, or whatever it is. So I'll talk to Billy about that and see if we can get some additional signs. But no, there's, nobody's trying to, we just gotta accommodate everybody, so...
You know, I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows that, you know, we are putting our dues in and I didn't want anybody thinking that we were just, you know, still in parking or...
Well, and I was gonna say, I mean, I think Tammy does a great job. And I have lunch there occasionally. And her lunch crowd is not, you might guess, and it's, I think it's very manageable. And I think we need to get with our employees here and make sure that they're moving over to the side parking lot also and leaving that front open for...
This parking lot right here was built exclusively for parking when we built it back in old Ford.
So I think we gotta make sure with our employees that they're moving over. And I know that Tammy will work with us in every single way.
Absolutely. And I do think that some signage would be very beneficial because there is only one little sign out there, and it actually blends in with the boxes, the electrical boxes that are out there. It's about the right level and same color and everything. So it's pretty, it blends in pretty well. So maybe some more signage and stuff. But yes, my employees do not park over there. I do have them move over there on Saturdays just so people see vehicles in the parking lot, and then they'll come in and then at night time to get them closer to the building for when they're leaving out here pretty late, so...
I think your customers are just as important as our customers here. And I think we all want your business to succeed and do well. So if we can find...
So if we can find some common ground, I think that would be good. But I think, I mean-
We share a lot of customers. I mean-
Yeah, no doubt.
A lot of people come here and sell food and come over to my place, so.
Are you blowing the smell this way?
I do, yeah.
One thing I'm gonna, this has nothing to do with parking, but I'm gonna give her a challenge, her and I both a challenge. You're in the city. It's Loudoun City Sales Tax is 2.5%. All that goes to Loudoun City.
Well, no, Loudoun City tax is just 1.5. I'll pay a 2% county tax.
Loudoun City's is 2.5. But we'll not let that go. We'll both do our research and double check that.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. And no, we don't wanna hurt your business, Tammy.
I never thought that you wanted to hurt it. Just wanted to make sure everyone understood we care for-
Adam?
Everybody should have this beautiful thing I tried to email earlier today, which apparently was a failure. This here is something I've been working on for a while and Jim Jenkins and I have gone over it, but he wants to talk about some more. It broadens A1 a little bit and R2 a little bit. We have R1 now, which includes single family, multi, apartment townhomes, all that stuff. So it generates an R2 for the multi-family to fall into, duplexes and all that stuff. So R1s would be your single family lots. A1, 2, and 3 just broadens the ag a little bit, the five acres, two and a half, and one acre. A lot of the setbacks and sewers and all that stuff matches what we currently have. So this is just a recommendation to send this to planning to start reviewing this.
And point out, we haven't adjusted, we haven't done anything to our zoning since 71?
72.
72, when the county adopted zoning. You need to tell about the RC one. I like the RC as much as any. Down to the very bottom, it's not very well covered, but RC-
It's gonna be expanded a little bit more. RC is gonna be your recreational and community zoning. So marinas would fall under that, or churches, or schools, or-
Utilities.
Utilities would fall all under that. Because right now, marinas, I believe, can only be found in A1. What if it's commercial land? You gotta go through rezoning, all that stuff. So all the community stuff would fall under the RC. That way we'd have a better understanding of what was going on.
Would there be like campgrounds and parks?
Anything that's not residential almost. Commercial, I think, commercial, C1 and C2 and M1, they didn't change any.
Or O, those we have not changed.
Or O, office, right. Those were, this is all mostly about, it's all about residential.
Mm-hmm, correct.
We only had so little to offer with the R1 and with A1 and A2. And so this, again, expands it all out and gives far more options and choices.
So again, this is just to go to planning to review and-
It still would have to come back here before anything's actually implemented.
Do you need a motion to-
That is in the form of a motion to send this to planning for the review.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Waller, seconded by Commissioner Shaver to send this recommendation to planning and zoning for their consideration. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Has Jim Jenkins seen this?
Yes, he has. And he likes it. He also-
He wants to add some, I mean, that's why I scored it them. They'll do their magic with it.
And Jim and I are gonna sit down later this week.
Okay, 'cause I mean, we're just now seeing it, so I didn't-
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Erin Rice, Director of Budgets.
Thank you. For letter A, it's consideration of recommendation regarding the resolution to approve the second district ARPA funds, 500,000 a piece, from Ms. Quillen and Mr. Jenkins, for the public fire safety training building in Lenore City.
Okay, I think-
This is time, this is time.
But I think we're okay with the resolution. After talking with Erin, I think she agrees it needs to be like it is. I mean, you can bring up, but she, the way she explained it, I think it's-
Like it is currently?
Yeah.
We don't wanna be responsible for maintenance.
Of course you don't. Right, I understand that. But at one point during the presentation for Mr. White, he indicated that Lenore City would be responsible for covering the expenses for the HVAC system in this building. And so in that regard, I would think that you would want something in writing in the local agreement to signify that Lenore City will be responsible for those costs.
I think a real easy way is to take maintenance off of that sentence right there. I don't have it in front of me, but I would really be more comfortable with-
Or something that says the county is responsible for no expenses, but we get to use it because of this million dollar gift.
It's real easy though on the resolution. What's the two words for it?
All we would have to do is, whereas there shall be an interlocal agreement between Loudoun County and Lenore City as to show an effort of combining resources. And then you might put a period there. But it goes on to say to accomplish, acquire, and maintain the training facility.
I think, I like the period one.
I'd just take that language out.
Yep.
Follow the period.
My, that, we had a meeting with Lenore City last week. I didn't get to go, but I had questions and they were answered. One of my questions to my boss was, who's responsible for maintenance?
Lenore City.
Well, they discussed that every agency that uses it may pay a little each year and goes into a maintenance fund. That way is what Don-
That'll be separate from this if they're in agreement with that.
Yes.
But I'm not even aware of that. That's not been discussed, but-
If you make a motion to that effect-
Okay. All right, then I will make a motion that we, I'll make a motion that we donate the $1 million to Lenore City's Police Department for the public fire safety training building project and change the resolution, changes the wording in the resolution to read, I know this is a long motion.
Just-
Whereas there shall be an interlocal agreement between Loudoun County and Lenore City as to show an effort of combining resources, period.
I'll second your motion.
Okay.
And the motion is to adopt with the amended resolution.
Okay, that's an easy way, yeah.
We got a motion by Commissioner Quillen, seconded by Commissioner Shaver. Any further discussion? Tammy, call or roll.
Quillen?
Aye.
Satterfield?
Aye.
Whitfield?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yes.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Let the record state that I made the second to send Lenore City a million dollars. Just make a note on that.
Somebody else's minute.
It wasn't my fault.
It wasn't yours.
Thanks, Bill, appreciate that. Bill, help me out over there.
Did I put that after the period on my-
No, just let that part go. It was all nice and chipper and Bill had to miss it.
It really was. I made note of that.
Okay, so letter V is consideration of recommendation regarding fourth district ARPA funds. Commissioner Whitfield to contribute $10,000 to the Loudoun County Sheriff's Department Benevolent Fund.
Yep, I think it's a great, a great call. I know the first district made a donation and I just kinda wanna follow suit with them, so I'll ask for a motion.
Okay. You gonna make that a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Seconded by-
Rosemary.
Rosemary. We got a motion by Commissioner Whitfield, seconded by Commissioner Quillen to use his ARPA funds to donate to the Sheriff's Department Benevolent Fund. Any further discussion? Call or roll.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yes.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Quillen?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, letter C is consideration of recommendation regarding seventh district ARPA funds. Commissioner Cohen is donating or contributing $10,000 of his 500,000 to the Loudoun County Sheriff's Department Benevolent Fund.
I'll make a motion for Mr. Cohen on, perhaps Mr. Cohen's lap, second.
Okay, seconded by Bill. Motion made by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner James to donate $10,000 to the Benevolent Fund for my ARPA funds. Any further discussion? Call or roll.
Whitfield?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yes.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes.
We got a, Rosemary said yes too.
Uh, sorry, Rosemary.
Okay, before Erin-
Emails and roll calls.
Before Erin moves on, the Benevolent Fund stepped up and is sending the Jenkins family to Police Week in Washington, which is in about two weeks, to attend that ceremony. That was an important part for that family. Go ahead, Erin.
Letter D is consideration of recommendation to approve additional funding on the courthouse for alternates, ballistic glass, and speakers at the counters, which are not covered by the insurance recovery from the file.
Okay, I'll-
I sent everything that I had to Tammy to include in the packets, so just so you know.
And the funding for that is coming from the-
Jail maintenance.
Jail and courthouse maintenance fund.
That is exactly what the budget committee approved.
Yep. I had a question for Steve Harrelson.
Sorry, you're over the limit.
I'm gonna say this money right here. I had a question for Steve Harrelson earlier, why we needed bulletproof glass followed by a steel roll-up door behind it? He goes, well, I don't know. I said, would you be mad if we got rid of the roll-up doors? He goes, no. So I would like change it to where we save $13,000 and change by not putting the roll-up doors behind bulletproof glass.
But the roll-up, the bulletproof glass has openings in just like-
No, no, it's electronic. They have electronic speakers in it.
But there's nothing where you could, like a bank where you can do-
No, I'm sure they have a drawer or something.
I mean, through the glass, if you've come up to pay a pint or something-
Yeah, 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 I'm sure they have to have some way to communicate back.
I'm just saying, you can walk off and just like said, come by, you can slide even you want to under that.
But that's like if they get some metal tech from the sheriff's deputy to the door.
In this day and age, everybody says that it never happened, that it never happened, that it never happened.
Well, the steel doors aren't gonna be down, 'cause people are gonna be talking to people.
They should be when, at the end of the day-
When they close.
When they close.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Behind three-inch bulletproof glass.
And the doors are locked and they got a camera system, Steve said.
So Steve said- Is everybody's laptops or your things working? Could you go back into that packet that Erin gave us and go to page eight on the packet? No, I'm just kidding, don't. We not got all night to wait all this. I just wanted to see if y'all could, look how quick I got to it. Look at there. Just making a point. That's not anything-
Anyways, I talked to Steve earlier, he said they didn't need the metal doors and I saved $13,000.
We did, made them, that's fine.
That's what Steve said.
I don't wanna give him something he doesn't want.
So what's the total price? $200,000.
That'll be the last one though.
No.
Like the one before it.
Yeah.
The 140,000?
It'll never even-
Is that minus the metal doors?
No, it's 200 with the metal doors.
So removing the-
187.
187.
186 and change.
That's fine, if he can live, if that's fine.
He can live with it?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay, we got a motion by-
Without metal sliding doors.
Do we have money in that fund?
Yes.
Erin wasn't happy for us to take it.
340-something thousand dollars.
You're right about that. I agree with that comment right there.
I remember.
I second Gary, you can't have-
Okay. We got a motion by Commissioner Whitfield, seconded by Commissioner Waller. Any discussion? Tammy, call or roll.
Cohen?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Nope.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jenkins not here, Quillen?
Yes.
Satterfield?
What do you mean, no?
I've been no since budget committee, you know that.
You don't wanna put up the glasses?
I didn't wanna do any of it.
To protect, you don't wanna keep them safe.
Oh, I want them to be safe.
Even if your lovely wife was standing behind the counter there.
Hopefully she won't be in criminal court. Maybe it really don't usually be she was.
Call the vote.
Yes, okay.
We gotta be consistent, you know that. If y'all wanna turn page nine, you can see the schematic of how the glass works with the speakers and-
Moving right along.
Moving right along.
Erin, getting out of control here.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion, we approve A through G with her-
But be careful because 112 is included in that.
And 112 is?
Is the, what you just approved.
So you got a back-
Just make sure that your motion includes that you don't approve the metal door.
We just, we just up here digging for the metal door.
I think it's included in this as well. I'll make a motion, we approve A through G without the metal door. Is that done for you?
That works.
Okay, we got a motion to approve A through G without the metal doors. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a second by Commissioner Satterfield. Any further discussion? Tammy, call or roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yes.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Quillen?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Whitfield?
Yours.